Thank you. We're gonna start the Town of Lake Clark Shores Hybrid Town Council Meeting, February ninth, two thousand and twenty-one. Can I have a call to order?
Mayor Valtean Rodriguez. Vice Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
President.
President Protown Robert Schalhoub. Councilmember Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Albert Pavone.
Here.
Thank you. We're gonna start with a moment of silence if we could, then followed by the invocation by Father who's present. Let's have a moment of silence. For Rose Marie Stowers, ninety-two years old, resident at seven one three eight Venetian Way. She passed away January nineteenth. Chief Smith's aunt for Alice Daltry. He was ninety-seven years old. She passed away on January twenty-ninth. She's Tim Daltry's mother. The two point three million people who've died in the world from COVID. Four hundred and sixty-five thousand people who've died in the U.S. For the twenty-seven thousand eight hundred and fourteen people who've died in Florida and for the two thousand two hundred and sixty-nine people who've died in Pontius County. And Father, would you lead us in a prayer, please?
Good evening. Oh Lord, as we begin this meeting this evening, we come to you in thanksgiving for all who are gathered here this day, whether in person or virtually. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work for our town. Grant our Lord wisdom to govern during these difficult times and a sense of welfare and understanding for the true needs of our town. Give peace and strength to the residents of our town as we continue to deal with this coronavirus. Grant healing to those who have been afflicted. Grant rest to the souls of those who have lost their lives due to this pandemic. Help us, oh Lord, to appreciate your abundant blessings and to constantly remember that all things come to us through your hands. As we ask you in your name, amen.
Thank you, Father. Do you pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father. We appreciate your, uh, and your prayer was very special. Okay, so I have approval of the today's agenda.
Second.
Hey, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have no presentations tonight. We do have a quasi judicial proceeding that will be presented by our town attorney Charlie Scheck regarding applicant CDV projects and town resident Claudine Vassour. So, as part of this, Mr. Scheck, I turn, turn the table over to you.
This is the first zoning board of adjustment case that was heard by the zoning board on January twentieth. It's the first case for nine, for two thousand and twenty-one. At the zoning board hearing, the applicant requested a seven-foot front yard variance and a seven-and-a-half-foot side yard variance to construct a carport that will be eighteen feet from the front property line and seven-and-a-half feet from the side property line. The code requires a twenty-five-foot front setback and a ten-foot side yard setback. And because of the proposed location, the variance request is for two variances, one for the front yard of seven feet and for the side yard, seven-and-a-half feet. At the hearing, the zoning board of adjustment voted to recommend approval to the town council for this hearing, which will take place this evening, with the condition that the carport remain open, unenclosed, except for lattice on the backside of the carport.
Thank you, Mr. Scheck. At this point, we're gonna allow a presentation by the applicant, either the representative for CDV projects or Ms. Vassour, whomever would like to come up and present. Just come right on up here to the microphone, if you wouldn't mind, and state your full name and your address as well.
Good evening, Claudine Vassour, six nine oh four Venetian Way, in Lake Clark Shores.
Thank you. Um, would you be presenting it? Could you say?
Well, I present you Jeffrey Brasseur, not Vassour, but Brasseur. He's an architect and if you have technical questions, he's there to help you.
Okay, great. So, is this, Charlie, for this part of the presentation, do we just allow her to state what she wants done?
Yes, but we do need to swear in anyone who is gonna testify because it is a quasi judicial proceeding.
And should I do that or should our clerk?
Uh, I will do it.
Okay.
Anyone who's going to give any testimony, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that you will, the testimony you will give this evening will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help your God. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ms. Vassour, could you tell us the reasons why you would like the town council to adopt the findings of the zoning board?
Well, because I noticed since I live here that the car is deteriorating very fast because of the weather, the sun, it's really unbelievable and I would like to protect, protect that investment and I do not have a lot of other places to put it. So, that's my only place where I really can put a carport and protect the car at least.
Okay. Anything else you wanna add?
Maybe a sauna, a jacuzzi.
That's funny.
A sauna or jacuzzi?
A sauna, jacuzzi. I didn't mean wanting to add.
In the car or on the property?
On the street.
Okay, so at this point, uh, it's a public hearing, so if anybody who's out there would like to speak, please let us know and I, our town manager will tell me if it's a person. And for the record, we're doing this virtually. We're allowing people to call in and ask questions or take part in this presentation.
Mr. Clark, can the, um, can the people out there in virtual land hear what's going on?
Absolutely, they can hear. Uh, we're broadcasting as we normally do through GoToWebinar. So if they've signed up for GoToWebinar, then they have the ability to hear what's happening. We have four attendees tonight and no one has raised their hand, so Mr. Mayor, you can probably assume there's no comments from the public.
Thank you. Um, I don't believe we need to have any rebuttal by you because there are no comments. So this time I turn it over to council comments and I'll start with Mr. Pavone. Um, any questions or comments you have?
No, I took a look at everything. Your house is already beautiful, so.
Thank you very much.
I know whatever you do will.
Well, I try to incorporate it also, you know, in the greenery and that it doesn't look too sterile.
No.
If that makes sense.
I have face. I have faith in all people.
Thank you.
I have no questions at this time.
Bob Schalhoub?
I just want the record to reflect of all those who are not in attendance that their, this application came before the zoning board of adjustments. And they approved the request and made the recommendation to the town council likewise. And I understand that there's been no one in opposition for your neighbors or anyone else since that time. Charlie, when was the, when did it go before, uh, the board?
January twentieth.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone appreciated that and it was a vote, I think of.
Four to five.
Was it unanimous?
Four to one.
Four to one.
Uh, four to one, sorry.
Thank you. No questions. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Paul Schalhoub?
I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, um, just my comment was I looked at it too. I'm very jealous of your house every time I drive behind it. Like, your house is very pleasing aesthetically from.
Well, I'm gonna give you a cart, so I do yours.
I go buy it a lot. Now, you, you have really good taste.
Thank you.
And you've been before us in the past and we appreciate all your comments and your continued support of the town and bringing things to our attention. We appreciate that. That's the only comment I have. Um, so it was called for a vote.
Yeah, I moved that we approve with all the zoning board's recommendations.
A second? Second? Okay, that was seconded by Bob Schalhoub. So all those in favor for approving the application and I'm not sure if I have to read the number, but, uh, yeah, CBA case number two thousand and twenty-one dash oh one as presented with the findings and facts that have been included in the order signed by the chairman Jonathan Maples. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay.
Also suggest that that be made part of the record of tonight's proceeding.
Yes, we'll make, uh, we'll move this into evidence, Charlie.
Yes.
The packet that was provided to us.
Please.
Very good. Okay, so it has been passed unanimously to agree with the zoning board. So.
Yay.
Move forward. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing for which we have none, but we do have unfinished business regarding ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash oh one. So we can have our clerk do the first reading.
An ordinance of the town council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter fifty-eight Traffic and Vehicles, Article Three, Golf Carts in Part, to provide for a revised definition of golf carts, to clarify a prohibited use, to allow children under seven years to ride on lap of an adult passenger, to revise inspection requirements, permit fees, and required equipment, providing authority to codify, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and an effective date, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm gonna open this issue up for discussion before there's a vote. Any council member, Mr. Pavone, I'd start with you.
Nope. No, everything looked good.
You had a chance to review it. Okay, I know. Yeah, I was looking at Mr. Schalhoub's, Bob Schalhoub's notes, uh, Mr. Freebold.
I'm good.
Mr. Bob Schalhoub?
I just had a couple of, uh, a couple of comments. I need somebody to explain to me why we don't want to do the inspection annually. Because that's being eliminated. If we're all about safety, it seems to me we need to have it inspected annually.
Um, I can add one thing to that. Uh, we had discussed it, I believe, at the, at the last council meeting and the theory was trying to make the whole registration process a little easier and not as cumbersome on the police department having to do it every year.
Well, registration is one thing, inspections is another.
Right, but it, but also it would be sort of like, in our town, I mean, you know, we don't have, we don't inspect cars anymore, but the police officer comes up to a car and the light's out or something, they got a right to issue a ticket and my understanding, speaking to Chief Smith, was that there'll be continual ma, uh, review of golf carts as they drive by and if the cops were to see a headlight out, right, or, you know, usually they'll stop them if they're not violating the law and then if they stop and then they see that something's missing, they'll give them a warning. So that seems to be the continual compliance. But I believe we discussed at the last meeting that every two years just seemed to be.
Permitted.
Permit, yeah.
I understand that. I'm getting back to why we're not inspecting it annually. And I don't think the police department is overworked to where the, how many police, how many golf carts do we have in town that are registered? Fifty?
I'd say around that number.
And how long is it gonna take you to inspect them? Five minutes?
Usually takes about fifteen minutes. Nobody's complained.
Nobody's complained about the fact that they don't wanna have their, their golf carts inspected? I agree with you.
No, and, and nobody on the police department has complained.
Complained that it takes too long?
No, nobody's complained about, um, going through the process.
All right.
That I'm aware of.
And I'm just saying, if we're all about, and if we're all about safety, I would like to have it, um, you keep it, not eliminate the annual inspection.
May I add something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I don't believe that there's a particular correlation between two years and one-year inspections. If you wanna be strict about it, why, why not every month? If it, if you're gonna focus on all about safety and somehow all about safety equates to the number of times you inspect the vehicle, then it would be every week. So I don't see the specific need to do it every year. If we can do it every two years, that's why you pay the fifty dollars. And again, I'm not aware of any statistical data. I don't think the town council members, my fellow members here, have any statistical data that says golf cart is more apt to be less safe if it's inspected every two years and every year. I think it could be assumed, but off of what? I have no idea. So again, I don't, I don't think there's a correlation between being all about safety and saying, okay, you gotta inspect every two years. I don't think that that is a contradiction. If it is, what's the correlation? What's the basis? I don't see it. So we're not making them check every week. We're not making them check every month. We're not making them check every six months or eight months or ten. So what's wrong with, if you wanna pay the fifty bucks, you get it inspected every two years. If you wanna pay the twenty-five dollars, you get it inspected every year. We'll see what people do. I'm not aware of there being any particular injuries or accidents or issues related to via lack of proper safety being followed as far as the mirrors, the horns, the tickers, the lights, the seat belts, et cetera. So again, I don't see any need to do it every year if you pay the fifty dollars, not to mention I don't see any actual correlation between the time of one year versus two years and therefore it's less safe. Um, so that's, that's my position.
Okay, that, I've, that you reminded me of the, one of the reasons why I felt like the one, every two years was fine. We have about twenty licensed golf carts in town that are licensed by the county with a county tag, which require no inspection at all. So, you know, I, I think what we're trying to do is if you use our town's procedure, you're actually being punished in a way because you have to go through inspections. But all these other golf carts that are on the road that are ta, tagged by the county don't require an inspection, just a renewal every year. We still have the insurance requirement.
Oh, that has to be reviewed annually, doesn't it?
Well, yeah, like all insurance policies.
No problem, annually.
But the insurance company doesn't require an inspection.
And the issue here is there's no statistical data saying it's not.
Well, that's, that's.
I'm just telling you right now, that, that's my position.
Okay.
Okay, there's no statistical data suggesting otherwise.
Anybody else?
They can, um, they can be pulled over and cited at any time if it's not in compliance, correct?
Yes.
They can be pulled over and inspected if they, if, if the police officer so deems it, uh, you know, proper.
Okay.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, does anybody wanna make a motion regarding the first reading?
Some of.
Seconded.
Second.
Seconded by Albert Pavone. All those in favor of the first reading of ordinance two thousand and twenty-one dash oh one, amending the town's golf cart code, say aye. All those opposed? So it's for five oh. Okay, great. This will be brought back up at the next meetings and then it'll hopefully become law. Any new business? No. Um, Mr. Clark, do we have any emailed questions? Or written questions or verbal questions?
We have no emailed questions. No verbal questions and one question, uh, tonight was how many participants? And we're up to six participants tonight.
Online. And for the record, we have one resident in, in, in the chambers and we can hold up to how many?
We can ho, hold up to six in the chambers.
Okay.
We had two.
We had two early, well, we had three or we had three people here earlier. Okay, thank you. Okay, so it sounds like we have no other comments from the audience, so we'll go to status reports. Um, Charlie, do you mind starting?
I don't mind at all. My report is included in your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have concerning it.
Any questions of our town attorney?
I do. Thank you. Uh, Charlie, what's the status of the lien for Renovate America?
We need to file a claim and I am waiting to get the detail for the justification for the twenty thousand and as soon as we have that, we'll have it filed.
We don't need to take any action.
I'll get with, no, you don't have to take any action. Uh, they filed for bankruptcy protection. They're not actually in bankruptcy and so we just need to make sure that our claim is, is noticed and I'll get with the manager in the morning and we'll get that taken care of.
Do you know, do we know what's going on with them?
I, I do not. I haven't heard any, anything concerning the matter, except for the initial notification.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
May I comment on that?
Yes, please.
Uh, as you know, Renovate America was the residential pace provider for Fred. They noticed us about three months ago that they were going to get out of the pace business altogether, both in Florida and in California. So we did our final bond with them in November. But none of us knew about the bankruptcy filing, so we knew that we're getting out of the business. We didn't know that this was gonna be part of their exit strategy.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Mr. Scheck, you've received correspondence from the town regarding Airbnbs?
Yes.
What, what were you able to determine from that?
Unfortunately, Airbnb's, the regulation and, uh, prohibition of Airbnb's has been taken over by the state and we do not have the ability to prohibit them if they have an appropriate license from the state. They must be licensed from the state. And as long as they have that, uh, state license, then they're allowed in the town. I'm hoping that, uh, in the next several years, there will be some legislation through the League of Cities that will address this issue because it tends from time to time to be a concern, uh, in residential communities.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions of town attorney?
No.
Nope, nobody. Okay, great. We move to Chief Smith. Could you do your report?
Uh, yes, Mayor. You all have a copy of my report. If you have any questions, I can touch some bases. Uh, the, the marine unit was out for a total of sixty-four hours of patrolling. Uh, the individual, the marine unit had seventeen contacts. We did, uh, six equipment checks, uh, four written warnings and one citation was issued. Uh, we had two individuals that were arrested and booked in the county jail last month, one for salt battery trespass, the other one for disorderly intoxication. Also, the end of the year report I signed off on, uh, staff spent a couple of weeks working on it and that's our annual, annual uniform crime report. And I got a couple of, uh, good information. I'll go through them. Our burglaries are down forty-two percent, larceny's down twelve percent, vehicle thefts down thirty-three percent, our aggravated assaults were down fifty percent, which is great, and domestic violence was down sixteen percent totally at the end of the year. We did have, uh, uh, when the COVID came in and people were confined, we, we had, um, domestic batteries go up a little bit and also assaults, people that live together in groups. But, um, at the end of the year, we're down sixteen percent and that is very good. So if there's any other information, you have all the backup information from fire rescue on all the responses and accidents they responded to in the city and the time factor in that.
Okay, great. Any questions, Chief Smith? One thing I just wanted to remind you of, see if you remember this, is at our last meeting, we agreed that we would wait, allow people up until October first to do their renewals of golf cart permits.
Right.
Okay, so we're not like going out giving tickets to people.
No, we, we have not, we, we have not, uh, enforced anything yet. We're waiting for your direction to do that. Now, we had some people that didn't wanna wait. They wanted to register the golf carts and just get it over with, so we, uh, uh, the police department accommodated those people.
Okay, good. So would not be till the next reading that we can actually permit though a golf cart that is motorized with a, a gas engine, motor. Okay, that's the only question I have. Thank you, Chief, and thank you for making sure your officers are really, and, you know, checking out golf carts. I, we see so many young people in them and I'm just trying to discourage these kids. I mean, you should not believe what you can do with a golf cart. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I believe that if we had a moment, we could introduce Officer Ambrosia.
Yes, please, come on in. Hello, officer.
He's the newest member of the chief's team.
Can you come to the podium so then we can show everybody who you are, put you on camera?
You're on camera.
Uh, everybody's gonna be able to recognize you now with that mask on.
You can take it off, please take it off. Uh, now we know what you look like.
Welcome, welcome. How long you been here now?
Uh, six, going on six months.
Six months. Great. You like working in the town?
Love it, sir.
Good, good. It's a very friendly people.
He's also a sergeant in the army.
Oh, well, thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service, yeah.
It's amazing. That's good.
Thanks, sir.
Do you speak other languages?
I am, I am Haitian.
So you speak Creole?
Creole and French.
Nice. So, good. So that always helps.
Hey, welcome aboard. Yeah, glad to have you.
Glad to be here.
Thank you. We, we appreciate your service. Please be safe.
We do, sir. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I thank you, um, Chief and for Clark. Mr. Clark, would you like to present your report?
Yeah, my report's there. Uh, I have three things I'd like to add to it. Norm Abramson Properties, as you know, has three two-story buildings that sit on Forest Hill and Florida Mango. He went to the value adjustment board and tried to get the, uh, value of those properties reduced. He took each one there as a separate case and he was, uh, denied all three cases. So, uh, that was great. We need people to, uh, sign up for the park committee. We're gonna go after a FERDAP grant. The FERDAP grant requires, uh, some participation of council and some participation of the public. Uh, so we need folks to sign up for the park committee, so any bodies that you wanna arm wrestle and send our direction, we really appreciate having. And the last thing is, uh, there have been a lot of committee meetings already in Tallahassee. We have commented on two, uh, specific bills for, um, staff with the League of Cities. Uh, David Cruz asked about, uh, some annexation changes that are being proposed by the Realtors Association. We, uh, commented on those, uh, favorably on one and, uh, not so favorably on the other. Uh, and then, uh, there is a bill that's gonna, that is proposing to make some significant changes to code enforcement in restricting even further what our code enforcement officers are allowed to do. In particular, they want to eliminate anonymous complaints. So we have been, uh, working with, um, Casey Cook, uh, of the League of Cities staff to try and, uh, point out all of the challenges that are already there for code enforcement officers and why eliminating the need for, or, or the ability to take anonymous complaints would be, uh, very bad. Uh, and in particular, we're focusing on the see something, say something approach that most cities have adopted in one form or another and pointing out that that, uh, would really gut that program if we didn't have the ability to do anonymous complaints. Other than that, anything else that's in my report, I'm happy to, uh, comment on or elaborate.
Yeah, questions?
Uh, a couple. So first, we're working backwards, which you last said, anonymous complaint, so that if the town receives an anonymous, if, if this legislation goes forward, the town receives an anonymous complaint, they just say, thank you, we can't do anything about it, hang up the phone?
Basically.
Doesn't make any sense.
Exactly.
Second, the park committee, uh, is this going back to the, with the last meeting when looking to see if we were gonna be able to get some grants to do the pickleball court and/or some other things?
So that's gonna be the focus of our FERDAP application is pickleball courts.
Okay.
Um, and to do the FERDAP application, you need a, uh, committee that reviews, a, as you said on before, for the, for the, um, exercise equipment. We have to go through that same process again. So we'll get a committee together, we'll get a committee recommendation, they'll bring it to council. Council will approve the recommendation and approve the match, uh, and then we'll move forward.
If we have any type of record or. record or notes reflecting the uh multiple town residents that have been seeking a pickleball court, maybe we could start reaching out to them. I'll reach out to the ones that have contacted me. That might be the motivation we need. I don't know how the last one was put together. I know I was asked and I jumped on the opportunity, but not many people like to volunteer for things. So hopefully we can get some volunteers of a vested interest. The last thing is with regard to the trip to Tallahassee that we take every year. I know I noticed in your report indicated that Palm Beach County days appear to be leaning more virtual, but giving everything that we're asking for here. What is your recommendation or position on us going up to Tallahassee and trying to do what we can, uh, building those relationships and getting some of these things accomplished?
I I think this year, we're gonna have to rely on our lobbyists. I don't know that even if we went up there, we would have much of a chance to get to see anybody. About the only place that we'd probably get to go would be a a committee meeting. So we'll we'll have to play it by ear. It may be one of those things where if you're available and it's a last minute jaunt up there, we take the jaunt.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Uh, questions from Mister Provo? No, Mister Freebold?
No, good. Dan, would you be so kind to explain to um uh our neighbors about eight bill three eighty-seven, which was filed to expand pace to include seawalls and subject to sewer conversion costs?
So um the pace program, uh, any changes to the pace program have have always had challenges in Tallahassee, mostly because of fears that the bankers might change the structure of of pace uh loans. Um, it appears now that there has been some type of truce struck between the bankers, the Realtors and uh the pace providers. And they're moving forward with uh changes to the pace bill that will allow for sewer assessments and for seawalls to be included as those expenses that can be funded by pace. So that for us, that opens up a lot of great possibilities for our residents moving forward.
Nice. Any other question?
Uh, Dan, you and I talked earlier today about the the issue with the bankruptcy and you and I are gonna get together with that tomorrow.
Yes, sir.
And um we approved the records management policy and procedure tonight.
Yes, sir.
Um, I wanted to address one issue with you. I'll do that. I'll do that uh after the council meeting, but I just wanted to let you know about that. And the Airbnb, Mister Sheck, uh, that is one of the priorities for the Florida League of Cities. If you will recall, I mentioned that in my last report, last meeting, that um this is this has always been on the uh the front burner with the Florida League of Cities, as is the Palm Beach County League of Cities, um regarding short-term rentals. So that's synonymous with short-term rentals. And what it does is we need Home Rule and Home Rule says we are in charge of what we can legislate here and for our community. And the state seems to preempt. Uh, they seem to think they know better than what we uh know about our um our backyard. And that's why uh we go to Tallahassee and we support uh Home Rule. And that's been the the mantra of the Florida League of Cities and the Palm Beach County League of Cities for the past five or six years and and probably beyond that. But I just want everybody to know, if you have, there's a uh a short-term rental and Airbnb, a vacation rental, VRBO. Um, our hands are tied. So um please be vigilant on any type of code violations on these properties and pick up the phone and call the town hall. Uh, that's one way that we can, in fact, um, make sure that they are in compliance with our our codes. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, Dan, I just, did I ask you?
Oh, I'm good, yeah. Thank you.
Um, Dan, just a couple COVID-related questions. Can we maybe reach out to healthcare district to have the mobile van brought back in the next month or two?
I'll I'll ask. Uh, they've taken the mobile van and converted it to vaccinations. But since they're not getting any vaccinations, it may be available.
Okay.
Bill Johnson retired. Mary Blakely took over as his replacement at DEM. Uh, Mary has always been very supportive and helpful. I'll reach out to her and see uh if we can get a testing van back.
Okay. The other question is, are we gonna keep the basketball nets down for a while in the park?
Yes. We again uh notched back up another notch this week.
Can you explain that, Dan, to the our neighbors?
So uh the Department of Health does an analysis by um by uh what is it? It's not, it's a census track, by census track. That's what I was trying to. Uh, they do an analysis by census track of the number of new cases per week of COVID. And we have been, they have uh five categories. They just created a new category, sixty-one to a hundred and twenty-three. Uh, we are in the uh twenty-three to sixty category. We had dropped down to the sixteen to twenty-three category for a couple of weeks, but we've moved back up. Uh, so I think until that goes down and stays down, I don't really see a reason to put the basketball hoops back up.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Okay, any other questions of Mister Clark?
Uh, if I may, um, Dan, you and I talked about, uh, see if we can um lobby the governor to see if uh we can have some vaccines for our our uh our seniors in Lake Clark Shores. Um, and enlist the assistance of our lobbyist, Mister Pinsky. Can you follow up on that again, please?
I wa- I I did not make that phone call today, but I will.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, we're gonna now move on to council comments.
Nope. Just wishing everybody Happy Valentine's Day.
That's right.
That's coming up. Don't forget to buy your loved one something.
It's on a Sunday. There's no excuse.
I have no comments at this time.
Yeah, I'm named after Saint Valen.
Somebody forgot the E, though.
Yeah, well, Saint Saint Valentin is the way you really say it. It's American.
I I have nothing at this time. I'm good.
Um, Bob Shawhoop?
Um, I'm good. Um, sorry that we're not gonna be able to move forward with a barbecue at this time. But um priorities, safety is our number one priority. And um it just gives us an opportunity to excel next year.
I agree. Um, Paul Shawhoop, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Chief, want to really thank you and all of your officers who are out there keeping us safe. Um, I have walked multiple times since our last meeting, been out there, driven countless, and there's virtually no debris anymore blocking the roadway. Um, I know that's a direct result of not only your officers, you know, get out there and making sure that everyone keeps the roadway clear and safe, but also a lot of the residents um heeding the need to keep those around them safe. So really appreciate that very much, Chief. And I appreciate you looking into the other issues related to um stop signs and um kind of some dangerous areas as have been reported by some residents. As soon as we found out, we reported to you and you followed up with your officers. So I really appreciate your attentiveness to those things. So thank you. Dan and I have discussed the debris removal issue a couple of times since last meeting. And one thing he pointed out to me was not only is it an issue on a daily basis here in town with regard to blocking the roadway and how that creates its own safety hazard, but there's been a significant issue when it's hurricane time. And when we get put into a zone and all of a sudden now all the debris needs to get removed from the street and put back into the house. And I remember, I think it was last year or thereabouts, when we had another, I don't think it was last year, the year before, we had a warning. And it was coming our way and I saw the officers, they were driving, they were knocking, they were telling people to move things up. Dan was driving around telling people to move things uh, you know, from the street into the house. The problem was people weren't doing it. Some did, but not all. And that is a significant safety issue. And I think that we need to have as a town, because this is a safety issue on both fronts, not only the hurricane, but blocking the roadways and creating a hazard for the the people who are walking around and driving and riding bikes and running. We need to have some type of an ordinance that gives the town the ability to go in and remove the debris and then assess the homeowner for the cost of that debris removal. So I was discussing this with Dan. Dan, could you shed some light on on what you had in mind as far as what we're looking to do here? This is basically, you get told, hey, you need to move it off. And if they don't move it out of the roadway, you get told again, maybe it's a one and done if it's the hurricane. And then we have the company like ABM, whoever we can, they come, they pick it up, whatever that fee is. That fee then gets put on to the homeowner, again, all in the safety of the residents. So Dan, could you shed some light on that?
Uh, I think you summed it up really well. That's kind of the 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 thought process. Um, last storm that we had, there was debris everywhere. And if that storm would have hit us the way it was being touted, uh, I think there would have been serious damage in town from flying debris. So if we can put something in place that gives us the option to uh have somebody go around at the last minute and pick up that debris uh and deal with it, I think that'd be a great tool to have in our bag. Not that we would have to use it every time, but there may be instances where that would make a lot of sense for us to do.
Can I jump on that?
Please.
Just follow up on that. The uh, maybe we can have an emergency stop work order saying, hey, look, you can't, you can't trim your trees within a certain window. And if we see them that they're that they're doing that, uh, maybe we can have um an emergency stop order saying you can't do it. Then we save, we we save that extra step. I'm just thinking out loud. Don't know what I'm talking about. Just thinking out loud.
Yeah, like when they issue like a tropical storm warning for the coast, it would stop then.
We we already have that in place. Uh, we we already have in the code those kinds of rules and nobody's following them. So what what do you do when that pile of debris is on the street? Um, you can't, i- it's almost impossible for our officers at that point in time to to have the homeowner deal with it. But I think a a financial disincentive, you probably only pick it up a couple of times before folks figure out that it's gonna hit their pay. They need to follow the rules.
So what uh is that something that we need, you need direction of the council on to to start looking into to see what that ordinance would look like? Or is that something you often kind of put before us in the next couple of months? An ordinance that could deal with that so we can start tweaking it and seeing what we can do or make sure that it's, I don't see what would be improper about it from a legal perspective, but that's more of a Charlie question.
If that's the pleasure of council, we can start putting something together. Um, the March meeting is gonna be very, very busy. Uh, so I I think it would probably be a better uh April or May discussion.
I think it would probably take that much time to figure out the right route anyhow. So that's fine with me.
I don't know what you mean by.
If uh, if we could do that, that'd be, I I'd be my request. I don't know if we need a motion or not. If we do.
No, I think we can do it by consensus. If it's the desire of the council for us to work on uh a draft ordinance, we can do that and present it to you at the future meeting.
I'd like to see that. Everybody else, what do y'all talk?
Didn't you say that was already in place and I don't pay attention? Why can't, why can't everybody just do it the right way and have the company that trims the trees take it away? Like all the council members up here do. Do it the proper way. I don't understand what the problem is that people would just wanna have their debris blowing all over their lovely neighbors. Things are missiles.
Right.
They're dangerous.
What what happens?
But didn't you say we have that in place already and they ignore it?
In the order, in the ordinance.
Trimming the debris from the time they're supposed to. You're gonna exercise this and they'll still ignore it. I agree. You start hitting them in the pocket, that's what'll happen. And it's not that hard to hire a company that will actually trim your trees, put it through the chipper and see later. Thanks for stopping.
And what I'm, what we're talking about is.
No, I understand what you're talking about.
Removed and that cost of the removal gets put on.
I know.
And if, and if they, and if they don't pay.
Well, it's a lean.
It's a lean. Then we lean.
Yeah, yes.
It just gets frustrating because we go through this every hurricane season.
I think it's.
I don't understand what you gotta do with people to help them understand that it's just a hazard. It's a huge hazard to even them, their own home. So just, it gets frustrating, that's all.
That's, that's why we're talking about it.
Yeah.
Okay, and if, if uh Charlie can help us with uh what statute says, I'd like to treat it like we treat a um nuisance claim. And I'd like to put it uh below the line as Mister Shawhoop would say, as opposed to a lean.
Oh, Charlie, I guess, can look into that. And then we, yeah, that sounds like a good idea. We have to put some, give some teeth to it.
So it it would be an assessment as opposed to a lean.
Right. Okay, any other questions you have? Um, any other comments? Excuse me.
Thank you. No, that's it. Thank you.
You know what I, if I may, Mister Mayor, I think what we need to do is to let everybody know what we did tonight in the consent agenda.
Sure.
Um, and then in particular, we uh passed a resolution and appreciation for the members of the Lake Clark Shore Citizen on Patrol. And um we thank Sergeant Shirley Welvis, uh Officer Ken Parker, Officer Beth Clark, Officer Nancy Freebold, Officer Al Hernandez, and Officer Ron Lavora and for their service. And um just thought, they should get a shout out for us because uh they're very, um, they do a lot of good work. And uh they're very unselfish in their uh in supporting the town in their activities. And we just appointed.
Ivan Gomez.
Ivan Gomez, uh, let everybody know that there are two vacancies on the Town of Lake Clark Shore's zoning board of adjustments for alternate members. And Mister Gomez expressed an interest, so we appointed him uh to serve as an alternate member on that. So just, we have an opening. So get involved. We'd love to see you down here. Thank you, Mister Mayor.
No, no problem. Thank you. Um, I had a nice Zoom meeting with um John Studdard and his family Sunday night. And uh it turned out really, Saturday night, excuse me, uh, we had to do it at nine o'clock because there are thirteen-hour difference. Um, and they're doing well. He told me to tell you hi. A couple interesting things about COVID in Beijing. They have the, one of the lowest rates in the world of infection. In fact, if somebody gets infected, well, you don't see them for a while after they get infected. But um they they keep the the percentages really low. They actually came around with the vaccines and they do it by your apartment building. Uh, their vaccine that they're operating is a little different than the one we have. It's not as effective, but uh they're able to administer it a lot quicker. He told me to tell you hi. He misses you. He can't come back to the US for a while. So he's stuck there because they won't let him back into Beijing for his job if he does leave and come here. But he's trying to get here this summer and he said he would stop by and say hi. Dan, thank you for your hard work and uh Charlie for getting that golf cart ordinance going. Dan and I had some discussions on how you could cross Forest Hill. Well, I think we can talk that more in March and April. But we're gonna come up with a way that we'll have a zone to cross Forest Hill safely um using a a park that we have over there um and encourage people to be safe in doing that. So I think that that was good progress on on the golf cart area. The tennis courts have been used quite a bit during COVID, which is a nice thing, and we're making some improvements to them. Um, uh, people are out riding bikes more and doing a lot more exercise, which is al- always a good thing. I've seen a lot of police presence with our big SUVs, which I like. They're bigger so that you seem to see them more, which is kind of nice. And uh Officer uh, the one that donates this time.
Manic.
Ed Manic.
Manic, what a nice guy. This guy donates his time. He's one of the most cheerful police officers and he's never taken a salary. What a grateful town we are to have an officer like that just work. He's retired and I guess he doesn't need to collect the salary. So that's nice. Um. Uh, a couple other things. People ask me, where are we on the C fifty-one? I told them it's on hold during COVID, but it's not gone. People ask me where we are in sewers and I tell them it's on hold. We're working on it. Um, I've heard that we're gonna have some roads repaved soon, which is good. And the bridge project, Dan, you said would be probably starting in the summer?
Yes, ho- hopefully in May, May or June.
That would be the pine tree bridge.
DOT is putting a constraint on us for construction. The construction has to occur off-season. So they want us to get started as soon as we can, May, uh, and get done as soon as we can.
Okay, that would be a major improvement that we need in the town. Okay, um. Oh, I didn't give you a chance to, oh, I gave, I'm sorry, I did give people a chance to talk. That's okay. It was under, it was under audience comments, but you know what?
You can have.
You can talk all you want. I looked at Dan and asked him who, who it is and he went on the computer and we sort of forgot about you there. But you can talk loud. We can hear you from there, I think.
What sort of restrictions is on how close you can have your vehicle parked to the property line?
You mean like on this?
Letting into your neighbor's hedge.
Charlie?
There's, there's nothing in the code that regulates the location of parking of the vehicle on the property. The only thing that we have is parking on the right of way.
Right. So if it's.
If somebody is eliminating the possibility for hedges to, to have sunlight, which kind of living things do need, what can you do? I have a pickup truck. I don't have it. Somebody next door has a pickup truck and a big boat behind it. So there's what, 30 feet of blockage?
Well, I, I don't know, but you could contact Dana to find out if there's a code violation. She, she will be sure to get on top of that. By the way, what was your name and address? So we have that for the record.
Ann Warren, 7524 Edgewater Circle.
I knew it, but I just needed it for the record. Thanks. I think you should talk to Dana. She seems to problem solve and she could maybe even gently and nicely talk to the people next door. I mean, Dana is a hardworking person. The other day, there was a lost tortoise in town and she ultimately found who the owner of this lost, it was an exotic tortoise. Someone wanted to put it back in the lake and she's like.
Probably my next door neighbor.
Maybe.
No, seriously, I mean so.
It was an exotic 50-year-old tortoise.
In front of their house on their little front porch, so to speak. They must have 15 or 20 artificial tortoises, all sizes, colors and types.
And they attract the big ones, the real ones. That's funny.
I, I don't know that the big ones are dumb enough to be attracted. But apparently my next door neighbor has some kind of feeling for tortoises, which is fine. I don't object to tortoises at all. I, when I had a yard that accommodated them, I had 13.
Nice.
Nice big ones.
They're, they're, yeah, well, the reason I said that about Dana, she's very resourceful. She, she can find dogs' homes and cats' homes and.
That's good.
Yeah, she seems to help us a lot in that area. But thank you for your comments, Ms. Warren. I appreciate it. Thank you for sitting through our meeting. Thank you.
You're more than welcome.
Thanks. Okay, well, um, it's always a pleasure. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Thank you. All those in favor, say hi. Remember, everybody, don't forget your mask.